Good evening, everyone. It is certainly my pleasure to call the November 6th, 2024 meeting of the Hampton City School Board to order. Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Althanjah.
Here.
Dr. Banks Gray.
Here.
Ms. Cherry.
Here.
Mr. Kilgore.
Here.
Mr. Samuels.
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse.
Here.
Dr. Mason.
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are present and accounted for. And at this time, I will ask our student rep to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Caleb Lucas.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will have some additional parts to our opening. Our student who was to be here to be a part of our invocation in our opening actually went to the wrong location. So, oh, I heard somebody say, "Oh." But they will be here shortly, and when they get here, we will give that student the opportunity to share their information with us, all right? But before we move along with the adoption of the agenda, I do want to take just the point of personal privilege to congratulate my colleagues, Ms. Stephanie Althanjah, Ms. Ann Cherry, Dr. Tina Banks Gray, and Dr. Reginald Woodhouse on a successful reelection to the Hampton City School Board. So congratulations to you. All right, more work to be done, all right? All right, so at this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we approve tonight's agenda as presented. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Althanjah.
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray.
Aye.
Ms. Cherry.
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore.
Aye.
Mr. Samuels.
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse.
Aye.
Ms. Dr. Mason.
Aye, motion carries. And at this time, I will turn the floor over to Ms. Goral for our recognitions.
Well, thank you, Chair Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Dr. Banks Gray, members of our school board, Superintendent Dr. Haynes, and members of our Hampton City Schools family. I am very excited tonight because we have multiple recognitions. As you can see, our audience is packed. So we're going to be recognizing students, staff, and even school board members. So at this time, would Dr. Woodhouse please proceed to the microphone at the center stage to assist with recognitions? And you've got some dinner, right? Because we've got a lot of recognitions tonight now.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, so.
So tonight, we are going to begin our recognitions by honoring our middle school girls and boys soccer champions. So at this time, I would ask for Coach Christina Pearson, Coach Carrie Smith, and our soccer student athletes from Jones Magnet Middle School Boys and Girls Teams to please join me down front at the podium. You look good.
All right.
All right, if you all actually would face the board, you get to face your parents in just a moment. But we're going to face the board first. All right. So as you are aware, Hampton City Schools started offering middle school grade sports in the 22-23 school year. And we are happy to announce that Jones Magnet Middle School won the soccer championship for both girls and boys for the 24-25 school year. Let's give them a round of applause. All right, the girls soccer team, under the direction of Coach Pearson, was victorious over Kilgore Gifted Center with a score of three to zero and a season record of 10-0. The boys, with Coach Smith, also defeated Kilgore Gifted Center with a final score of eight to zero and also a season record of 10-0. Let's give them a round of applause. And then, Dr. Woodhouse, since we have such a large group, why don't you go ahead and invite the girls team up first?
All right.
If you all would go ahead upstage with Dr. Woodhouse, and now you can face your fans.
Okay. Thank you. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Dr. Tina Banks Gray, the Hampton City School Board, and our Superintendent, Dr. Haynes, I am honored to present these certificates and banners to the coaches and coins to each of the players and coaches.
Ms. Charbonneau is our vanna tonight, so she's going to assist with the banners and the coins as Dr. Woodhouse reads the certificate. Upside down, flip. Upside down.
Upside down.
I used to sign in.
All right, ladies, could you get behind them so I can get a picture of all of you with your banner? All right, let me grab a quick picture, Dr. Woodhouse, before you read the certificate. Excellent, thank you.
All right, and the certificate reads, "Congratulations. The certificate is proudly presented to the Jones Magnet Middle School, 2024-2025 Middle School Girls Soccer Championship." Let's give them another.
And before we call the boys up, would Coach Pearson like to say a few words?
Hello, so there was no championship last year, but while I have the mic, I'll brag on them. The girls went undefeated last year as well.
All right. All right, if you all could have a seat, we're going to go ahead and call the boys team up.
You're welcome.
All right, gentlemen, go ahead. You guys can stay right here and look up, they're waiting. All right, Ms. Charbonneau, would you mind passing out the coins and the banner, and then Dr. Woodhouse can read the certificate? All right. All right, and then Mike.
Our certificate of achievement reads, "Congratulations. The certificate is proudly presented to the Jones Magnet Middle School, 2024-2025 Middle School Boys Soccer Champions." Let's give them another hand.
And Coach Smith, would you like to say a few words?
Just thanks for doing this, it looked really nice, I really appreciate it.
Those are a few words. There you go.
All right. Now, before we acknowledge the parents, administrators, and the other guests in attendance for these athletic and coaches, we would like to also recognize Richard Forum Fortune, our Hampton City School Director of Athletics, for his work with our middle grades sports programs. Mr. Fortune, please stand. Okay.
Now, he may be at the track. We had our very first middle school track meet tonight.
He's at a track.
So he is probably at a track meet for that. But yes, so before all of our student athletes go back to their seats, if they're, I know we have a lot of parents here, we've got administrators, I saw them in their shirts as well. Teachers, would you please stand to be recognized? Parents of our student athletes up here, please stand to be recognized. All right, thank you all, you may have a seat.
Okay.
I like their shirts. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to our next recognition. And this is actually a recognition for some students, former students, and staff members. And I'm going to ask you to join me down at the podium with Ms. Tracy Bourne, Sophia Harris, Nolan, is it Ladison, Madison Dowerty, Zion Parks, Antonio Pitts, as well as the cast and crew of Until Daylight Comes and Omelet Sunday. Please join me down front. Star beside me, I feel like I need an autograph. Lots of stars. All right. So excitement certainly filled the air during the weekend of October 18th through the 20th as short films written, directed, and produced by students from Hampton City Schools, Newport News Public Schools, and Charleston County School District in South Carolina debuted at the Ferguson Center for the Arts at the Next Generation Storytellers Film Festival 2024. Tears of joy, screams of laughter, and tense moments of suspense fill the theater as attendees witnessed firsthand the hard work and dedication of these talented students who have worked alongside Hollywood actors, producers, directors, and other cast and crew. So tonight, we are honoring the Hampton City Schools students and one teacher who received awards at the film festival. So first, we have Tracy Bourne, would you please wave for us, Ms. Bourne? Ms. Bourne is a theater teacher at Kickatan High School. She won the Best Community or Staff Member in an Acting Role. Another round of applause. Next, we have Sophia Harris. Sophia is a student at Kickatan High School and one of our school board student representatives, and she won Best Supporting Actor. Let's give her a round of applause. And where is Nolan? And how do you say your last name?
Ladison.
Oh, I did say that correctly, good, yay. Nolan Ladison, a recent graduate of Phoebus High School, took home two honors, Best Comedy and Best Original Screenplay for Omelet Sunday, of which he was the writer and the director. So joining us tonight is also cast and crew of Omelet Sunday. Who was all in Omelet Sunday? Madison Dowerty of Phoebus High School. Where's Madison? Over here. Won Best Drama for Until Daylight Comes. She was the writer and director as well. So also joining us tonight is hopefully the cast and crew of Until Daylight Comes. Do we have cast and crew? There you go. Zion Parks, and I don't see Zion because he graduated, I believe so, yeah. So he is a recent graduate of Phoebus High School. He won Best Actor for his role in the film Until Daylight Comes. And last but certainly not least, we have Antonio Pitts. So Antonio is from Bethel High School, and he was awarded a $16,000 scholarship from Christopher Newport University. He played the lead of Timothy in Omelet Sunday and was also crew on Chainsaw, The Choice is Yours, and Until Daylight Comes. So he was quite busy, so you deserve that 16 grand, there you go. All right, if everybody would please join Dr. Woodhouse up on the stage. Yes, yes, yes.
Now, on behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Dr. Tina Banks Gray, Hampton City School Board, and our Superintendent, Dr. Haynes, I am honored to present this certificate and coins to each of you.
Ms. Charbonneau, you're a great vanna, but can you give Dr. Woodhouse the certificates back so he can read those? Well, they're all different. Let's do Ms. Bourne first. We got this straight, don't worry.
Thank you so much for helping me. All right.
Ms. Bourne, would you like to, Ms. Bourne, would you like to go over by Dr. Woodhouse?
The certificate reads, "Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Tracy Bourne, Kickatan High School, Next Generation Storytellers Film Festival Awards, Best Community or Staff Member in an Acting Role."
All right, let's do Sophia next, Sophia Harris, if you would go up by Dr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Next. How are you? Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Sophia Harris, Kickatan High School, Next Generation Storyteller, Film Festival Awards, Best Supporting Actor.
Next, we'll have Nolan. Nolan Ladison.
Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Nolan Ladison, Phoebus High School, Next Generation Storyteller Film Festival Awards, Best Comedy. Congratulations.
Don't go far, you have a second certificate.
And congratulations again. This certificate is proudly presented to Nolan Ladison, Phoebus High School, Next Generation Storyteller Film Festival Awards, Best Original Screenplay. Congratulations. Yes.
Madison would be next. Dowerty. Doherty.
Doherty. All right, this certificate is proudly presented to Madison Dowery. Doherty. Phoebus High School, Next Generation Storyteller Film Festival Awards, Best Drama.
Zion Parks is not here, so we will recognize Antonio Pitts next.
Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Antonio Pitts, Bethel High School, Next Generation Storyteller Film Festival Awards, Christopher Newport University Scholarship Award. Congratulations.
And Dr. Woodhouse, these are our cast members, correct, that are on stage? Yes, so make sure that they get coins as well. And I would like to say that Ms. Jen Lockett played a huge part for first generation, next generation storytellers. And if she could just give just a few words, I'm putting her on the spot, just to talk about that experience for our students. All right, good evening, everyone. All right, moving on to our next recognition, which is to honor the Bethel High School Athletics Program for receiving the VHSL Claudia Dodson Sportsmanship, Ethics, and Integrity Award for the 23-24 school year. So at this time, I'd like to invite Bethel High School's Athletic Director, Daraki Kroom, Executive Principal, Dr. Tanya Howard, to join me at the podium, as well as all of our Bethel coaches and administrators who are here tonight. So Athletic Director, Mr. Kroom, Coach Kroom is not here, but it's for good reason. They have a volleyball tournament tonight for, is it region finals?
Yes.
Ooh. The girls made it to region finals, so he is there right now, so excellent. So let's talk about this award. This award, in conjunction with the Virginia High School League, which we call VHSL, recognizes schools that have established policies and procedures that make sportsmanship a priority and an expectation within the school and the school community. Bethel was only one of four, and I'll say that again, only one of four schools in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia to receive the award for the 23-24 school year. And we're not talking school divisions, but there's 130-plus school divisions. You know we have four high schools in our division alone. So there were one of four schools, again, to win this award. So let's give them a huge round of applause. And one other piece I should have said before that round of applause, but we can always applaud more, is that this is the second consecutive year that Bethel has received this award. So the award was established in honor of the memory of Claudia Dodson, a VHSL Assistant Director from 1971 to 2002. According to the VHSL website, Claudia was passionate, insistent that the educational basis of VHSL programs remain at the forefront. No one did more to promote standards of behavior expected from coaches, athletes, activity participants, students, and team followers. So before I turn the presentation over to Dr. Woodhouse, I'm going to actually ask Dr. Howard, since Coach Kroom is not here, to introduce everyone that's here tonight.
Well, my academy principals, this is Mr. Travis Oliver, Dr. Charmaine Grove, Ms. Cantrice Pace Pierce, Mr. Patrick McCray, our Dean of Students and Coach of our varsity basketball team, Mr. Craig Brien, and our Assistant A.D., Mr. Miguel Incremenius.
All right, would you all join Dr. Woodhouse?
All right, Dr. Howard and the Bethel coaching staff join me on stage. All right. Hello. I'm doing great.
All right, let me get a quick picture before he reads the certificate.
All right. Now, on behalf of our Chair, the entire school board, and Dr. Haynes, we would like to congratulate you and the entire Bethel High School family for being awarded the VHSL Claudia Dodson Sportsmanship, Ethics, and Integrity Award for 23-24. I am honored to present you with a certificate, coins for your administrators, for your coaches, and a banner from the Hampton City School Board. Now, the certificate reads, "Congratulations." This certificate is proudly.
We have pom-poms out here. All right, thank you all, you may have a seat.
Good to see you.
All right, we're still going, so everybody, we ready? All right. So for our next recognition, I'm going to ask actually Dr. Holloman of Barron Fundamental Elementary School to join me again down on the floor. We're going to ask Dr. Tanya Howard of Bethel High School again to join me down on the floor. Great things going on in both schools. We have Dr. Dwayne Lucas from Kickatan High School. Mr. Enricius Williams of Mary W. Jackson Fundamental Elementary School. And if your administrative teams are here, please join us down front as well. Our academy principals, our assistant. Our academy principals, our assistant principals, please join us. This work was not done in isolation. All right. Perfect. So Barron Fundamental Elementary, Bethel High, Kickatan High, Mary W. Jackson Elementary, they each received the 2024-2025 Virginia Department of Education, Board of Education Highest Achievement Award. Let's give them a round of applause. Again, thinking about how many schools are in Virginia, 130-plus school divisions alone, plus all of their schools. These four schools are totaled only 92 that were honored with that 24-25 Highest Achievement Award. They earned recognition for meeting a specific criteria based on their performance during the 23-24 school year. So let's give them another round of applause. And actually, since we've got such a large group, can we recognize them individually up on stage?
Sure.
Perfect. Let's start with Barron. Barron's coming back up. Is this the staff from Barron that's here? Y'all go get in the picture. Come on.
Okay. And on behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Dr. Tina Banks Gray, the entire Hampton City School Board, and our Superintendent, Dr. Haynes, I would like to present this certificate, and I believe you already have the coins and the banner. And so the certificate reads, "Congratulations." This certificate is proudly presented to Barron Fundamental Elementary School. 2024-2025 Virginia Board of Education Highest Achievement Award. Congratulations.
All right, next up, let's recognize the Bethel team. Is there anyone else from Bethel here tonight, Dr. Howard of your staff? All right, let me get a picture.
Okay. And on behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, our Vice Chair, Dr. Tina Banks Gray, the entire Hampton City School Board, and the Superintendent, Dr. Haynes, I am honored to present this certificate to you that reads, "Congratulations." This certificate is proudly presented to Bethel High School. 2024-2025 Virginia Board of Education Highest Achievement Award. Congratulations.
Thank you all. Dr. Lucas, would you and the Kickatan team please join Dr. Woodhouse onstage? All right, y'all smile.
All right, Dr. Lucas and the Kickatan team. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, and Vice Chair, Dr. Tina Banks Gray, the Hampton City School Board, and our Superintendent, Dr. Haynes, I am honored to present this certificate to you, along with the coin and banner, that reads, "Congratulations." This certificate is proudly presented to the Kickatan High School. 2024-2025 Virginia Board of Education's Highest Achievement Award. Congratulations.
I got a picture. I thought I did. Let me check. Yes, I did. All right. And last but not least, we have Mr. Williams. He is here representing Mary Jackson, but we've got some fellow administrators that are helping hold the banner. He's coming on up. It's his feeder school.
All right. On behalf of Dr. Mason, our Chair, the Vice Chair, Dr. Tina Banks Gray, the Hampton City School Board, our Superintendent, Dr. Haynes, we are honored to present this certificate along with the coins and banner. And the certificate reads again, "Congratulations." This certificate is proudly presented to Mary W. Jackson Fundamental Elementary School. 2024-2025 Virginia Board of Education's Highest Achievement Award. Congratulations.
Again, as they're exiting the stage, I think it's just super important to just recognize one more time, there were only 92 schools in all of Virginia that got this Highest Achievement Award. That was not an award that was easy to come by. And these four schools were one, or four of the 92. So congratulations to each and every one of you. Dr. Woodhouse, that was a long night of recognitions. We are complete, sir.
Okay, thank you. I can go sit down.
Yes, sir. Except, we're not done with all of our recognitions. Now, I'd like to call Dr. Mason to the mic. So as Dr. Mason is making his way to the microphone, our next set of recognitions occur each year, because each year, the Virginia School Boards Association recognizes board members, school board clerks, and superintendents for their dedication, time, and hard work in improving boardsmanship skills through VSBA meetings, conferences, board development and training, and active involvement in the association. VSBA members earn credits for VSBA Academy Awards, which are based on participation from July 1 to June 30 of each year. There are five levels of awards with certificates and pins awarded for a particular levels. The VSBA awards are presented annually to those individuals who meet the requirements. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mason. Would you like me to read your part of the script?
No.
Okay, you got it.
I'm going to read every word on this certificate.
Look at you. There you go.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. But no, I would like to call Dr. Haynes to the podium at this time. Yeah, bootin' on, come on. You want to stand on this side so you can fit your- Dr. Haynes?
Yes, sir.
It is truly my pleasure to present to you the certificate and the bronze pin to you. And that's for earning 24, you're supposed to earn 24 credits in two years, but it is important to note that Dr. Haynes has earned 24 credits in one year. So let's give him a round of applause. Now, I'm going to go sit down. Oh, yes, come, that's it. You move this way here?
So Dr. Mason's going to sit down, and we're going to actually have Dr. Haynes sit down as well, since he is in a booth this evening. So we're going to have Ms. Charbonneau help out with the awards, if you don't mind. All right. So at this time, I'm going to call Ms. Anne Stevens Cherry. Ms. Stephanie Jackson-Afonge to the microphone, please. So this next award is called the Award of Recognition. The Award of Recognition is given to members who earn 15 credits in a year. So congratulations to our board members, Ms. Anne Stevens Cherry and School Board Member, Ms. Stephanie Jackson-Afonge, for earning 15 credits in one year and the Award of Recognition. Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you.
And if I could get you all to scoot over and I'll get a picture?
Thank you. On behalf of my colleague, I'm just-
Would you like to say a few words, Ms. Cherry? Moving on, we're going to recognize Dr. Mason, Dr. Tina Banks Gray, and Dr. Woodhouse. And Dr. Woodhouse, yes, you've got to come back up again. All right, our next recognition is the Silver Pin and Award of Excellence. The Award of Excellence is for those members who earn 48 credits in two years. So congratulations to our Chair, Dr. Richard Mason, our Vice Chair, Dr. Tina Banks Gray, and our School Board Member, Dr. Reginald Woodhouse, for earning the Award of Excellence. Would you give them a round of applause? All right, with Mr. Jason Samuels, please come to the mic. All right, our next award is the Award of Honor. The Award of Honor is for those members who earn 66 credits in two years. So congratulations to School Board Member, Mr. Jason Samuels, for earning, I'm a little tongue-tied at this point, for earning the Award of Honor. Let's give him a round of applause. And then our final recognition this evening with Mr. Joseph Kilgore. Please come forward. So our final recognition this evening is actually the highest honor that you can receive through VSBA. It is called the Award of Distinction. The Award of Distinction goes to members who earn 84 credits in two years. And this award goes to Mr. Joseph Kilgore. And with his award, he gets a Starfish pin. So congratulations again to our School Board Members and our Superintendent for earning these VSBA Academy Awards. Let's give everyone a big round of applause for their recognitions this evening. And Chair Mason, that concludes the recognitions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kilgore. Any comments from board members in regards to our recognitions tonight? I certainly would like to say, we had lots of things going on tonight with our students and schools, from athletics to just honors. And it goes to show what we're doing in Hampton City Schools, and we are very diverse and well-rounded in what we're doing within Hampton City Schools. As always, a reflection of what's happening with our board members as well. And I do want to commend our board members for continuing the level of excellence and working hard and attending the conferences and the trainings and things of that nature. And a special shout-out to Joe Kilgore, because he is doing lots of work, even at the state level, as relates to understanding of what's going on within the state as far as our schools, but especially all that he's pouring into Hampton City Schools. So thank you, Mr. Kilgore, for your leadership and the distinction that you received. So thank you very much. All right. So moving along, we're going to go right into the consent agenda, item number three, which is 3.01 Personnel Report 24-20, 3.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of October 16, 2024, 3.03 School Board Consent to Receipt of Donations for November of 2024. And with the pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chair, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Afonge that we approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, you please call for the vote.
Ms. Afonge?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. And at this time, I will turn our meeting over to our award-winning Superintendent, our bronze award-winning Superintendent. All right.
Thank you, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of the Board, and the Hampton Community. Before we begin with our Board Reports, I too would like to extend heartfelt congratulations to our four re-elected Hampton School Board Members, Dr. Tina Banks Gray, Ms. Anne Stevens Cherry, Ms. Stephanie Jackson-Afonge, and Dr. Reginald Woodhouse. We're thrilled to have you and your continued leadership, vision, and dedication as part of our school division School Board. Your commitment to our students, staff, and community shines through in every decision that you make, and your reelection is a true testament to the trust and confidence our community has in each of you. Look forward to the progress we will make together as one community, one transformation, as we work towards excellence with intentionality in every classroom to create brighter futures for all of our students. Once again, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
For this evening's first report, Ms. Randy Keese, I said it right? All right. Vice President of Development for Peninsula Agency on Aging is here to share information on how her organization can partner with school divisions to help students to cultivate positive views of aging. Ms. Keese is a passionate advocate for aging issues, focused on ensuring that older adults have the resources and support needed to thrive in their communities. I would also like to thank Ms. Cherry for connecting Ms. Keese with Hampton City Schools and our support of our one community, one transformation, excellence with intentionality mantra. Ms. Keese?
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. So I want us to all just take a quick moment and picture a 12-year-old student named Jordan. Jordan, like many kids, hasn't spent much time with older adults outside of his own home. And his ideas about aging are mostly shaped by media and stereotypes, he's heard, which often portrays older adults as a negative thing, and aging as something we should fight against. Now, imagine that Jordan's school introduces a program where he works on a project with an older adult who becomes his mentor and a friend. Over time, Jordan's perception of aging shifts from seeing it as something distant and unappealing to viewing it as a stage of life fulfilled with resilience, stories, and, let's face it, often humor. This is what we're here to talk about tonight, creating opportunities for students like Jordan to connect with older adults and reshape their understanding of aging. This work not only enriches the lives of students, but also offers older adults the friendship, the purpose, and the joy of the journey of aging. I strongly believe that by bringing positive and accurate aging perspectives into schools, we can make a difference, not just for students, but for our entire community. Stories like Jordan's- Stories like Jordan's capture the heart of what I'm here to accomplish. I'm Randy Keesey, Vice President of Development with Peninsula Agency on Aging, and PAA is the local nonprofit that empowers older adults to age in place with services and supports. Our work at PAA is rooted in supporting older adults and individuals throughout the aging process. A few years ago, I became involved with the Reframe Aging Initiative, which directly addresses the stereotypes that Jordan once held, stereotypes that many of us may not even realize that we carry. This initiative, led by the National Reframe Center of Aging, aims to shift the narrative around aging from one that is death, decline-focused, and celebrates the strengths, resilience, and unique contributions of older adults. Today, I'm excited to share how we can bring these values into our schools through curriculum, integration, service learning, and meaningful conversations that reshape students' perspectives on aging. By fostering intergenerational understanding, we not only help students view aging as a journey filled with growth and contributions, but also creates opportunities for older adults to find purpose and connection. This approach also offers significant benefits to teachers and families. For teachers, it enhances the classroom by fostering a more inclusive and dynamic learning environment. Parents, on the other hand, get to see their children develop empathy, respect, and a deeper understanding of the value of older generations bring. Together, we really can cultivate a generation that appreciates all ages and recognizes the richness that older adults bring to our society. And thank you for giving me this opportunity this evening. As we dive into why this matters, it's important to recognize that we're doing more than just connecting older adults and students. We're actively addressing ageism. This is the ingrained stereotypes and biases that shape how we perceive aging and often limit how we value and interact with older adults. Do you know that ageism is the most widespread and still socially acceptable form of prejudice in our current society? For students, these interactions help dismantle those biases early on, teaching them to see older adults as individuals with rich stories, resilience, and relevance. And by promoting positive and accurate views of aging, we're creating a community where people of all ages are respected, valued, and supported. And this matters because ageism does not discriminate. It's one of the few biases that affects every single person at every age. We've heard this many times, that Americans are living longer and working longer, and really redefining what later in life can look like for older individuals. But here's the problem: The way we think about and talk about aging hasn't caught up. We're still stuck in these old outdated views on aging that dominate the conversation. Think about your birthday cards, advertising, your health campaigns, your school curriculum. These outdated ideas are holding us back, keeping old policies, practices, and systems of care in places that we really need for them to evolve. Instead of adapting to the realities of today's older adults, these old views limit our ability to create inclusive and support models that truly reflect the diverse experiences and strength of aging in our communities. Research shows that when we help people see aging in a broader, more positive way, society's attitudes shift. We start valuing older adults as equal members of our society and support growth for policies and programs that benefit all of us as we continue to age. Aging, we all know, is a universal experience. And when students understand this journey, they gain empathy and respect for the lived experiences of others. This connection breaks down aged-based stereotypes and supports a much stronger, more inclusive community. Older workers... So now let's talk about the cost of ageism. New research gives us a glimpse of just how expensive age discrimination really is in America, and the numbers are staggering. Older workers face longer periods of unemployment, biases in hiring processes, and fewer chances for professional development, and all of which has serious economic consequences. And the effects extend into healthcare. Ageism accounts for an estimated $63 billion in healthcare expenses for those that are 60 and older. Ageism was responsible for 17 million cases out of the eight major health issues in a one-year timeframe. We can significantly change this. Ageism is a social issue with real human consequences, as you can see. And as an early childhood or elementary educator, we have the chance to build understanding and respect for aging right now, right in our schools. And by establishing Hampton City Schools as a model program, we can pave the way for a more inclusive and respectful environment for aging in our community. So now let's examine the impact of cultivating these intergenerational connections for our students and our entire community. When students engage with older adults, they are exposed to different perspectives and life experiences that help them develop empathy. This interaction teaches them to listen actively, communicate effectively, and appreciate the diverse backgrounds and stories that shape everyone's lives. They learn to connect with individuals from different generations, cultivating a deeper understanding of all human experiences. By seeing older adults as dynamic individuals with valuable contributions, students learn that age does not define capability or relevance. This shift in perception encourages them to see aging not as a decline, but as a stage of life filled with growth and resilience. Ultimately, this helps create a culture that values individuals for who they are, not for how old they are. When students recognize and appreciate the strengths of older adults, they help cultivate an environment where everyone feels valued regardless of age. This inclusivity promotes collaboration, mutual respect, and a sense of belonging for all community members. And interacting with individuals from various generations provides students with the chance to receive mentorship and guidance. Older adults often have a wealth of knowledge, skills, and life experience that they can share, offering students insight and advice that can shape their personal development. Think about your own foster-grandparents program. Jason would appreciate that. Now, the question is, how can we bring these benefits directly into our schools? How can we actively address ageism? The first place to start? The 100th Day of School. Thank you, Jason. You laugh at that, and I have a great example for you. The 100th Day of School is already a milestone in many schools, often filled with activities that mark the occasion, but it's usually done by having students dress up as 100-year-olds. And what does that look like exactly? Typically, it means gray hair, canes, hunched over, using walkers. While it's meant to be playful, Jason, it can unintentionally reinforce the idea that aging equals frailty, confusion, or being out of touch. This kind of activity, even when it's meant for fun, risks promoting stereotypes and making it seem okay to laugh at the unique experiences that come with aging. Instead, we could reframe this day as a chance to celebrate the strengths and experiences that come with age. By shifting the focus, we help kids understand that things like canes, walkers, hearing aids are tools for independence, not symbols of decline. If we reimagine the 100th Day of School as a day to celebrate the strengths and wisdom that come with age, we can help students see through a more respectful and accurate lens. And the National Center to Reframe Aging is actually hosting a webinar in January specifically for educators about the curriculum for the 100th Day of School. And by shifting the focus on this particular day, we're teaching students to see aging as a natural, positive part of life. So expanding on the 100th Day of School, we can start by bringing older adults into the classroom in meaningful ways. But this is just the beginning. To keep building these bridges and broadening their views, we can continue creating opportunities for older adults also to connect with students. One impactful way to do that is to bring in guest speakers. Using connections, again, through the Foster Grandparents Program or utilizing PAA, we can bring in guest speakers who have such unique perspectives on everything from local history to personal resilience and unique perspectives on everything else. These storytelling opportunities offer students the chance to hear about past eras, understand challenges, and overcome triumphs that have shaped their community. Storytelling sessions can deepen students' understanding and break down age-related stereotypes even further, and that's an impact that can be felt by teachers just as well. Teachers can also consider structuring Q&amp;A times, giving students the chance to engage directly with the older adults to spark curiosity. And really, it is for them to help understand the different life experiences. Now, the big one: Building on the insights of guest speakers, we can share. We can go one step further to enhance students' understanding by creating a more accurate representation of what aging looks like and what it truly is through classroom curriculum. The National Center to Reframe Aging has access to ready-made curriculum modules that educators can easily implement. These modules include components such as lesson plans, activities, and multi-generational resources that illustrate the positive aspects of aging. And the content is flexible enough to make it so much easier to integrate into the education process. Curriculum modules can include interactive activities that engage students to engage directly with older adults. This might involve role-playing scenarios, creative projects, or group discussions that highlight the strengths and the capabilities of older adults. One of the goals for PAA and the National Center to Reframe Aging is to also offer workshops and training for educators on best practices for teaching about aging and to address ageism. These sessions can equip teachers with the tools and strategies to address ageism, promote respectful interactions, and engage students in meaningful discussions about aging. Now, by adopting new curriculum modules, that focus on aging, schools can now begin to spark students' interest on pursuing careers in gerontology. The growing population of older adults highlights the increasing demand for a range of careers focused on this demographic. But guess what? There's less interest in these fields. It remains relatively low. So creating a gerontology career track within the academies of Hampton presents an exciting opportunity to equip students with the knowledge and skills necessary for engaging with older adults. And by integrating gerontology-focused programs, we can inspire students to consider careers in various fields that support older adults, from healthcare to social services. In addition to creating this separate gerontology track, Hampton City Schools can enrich current tracks within those programs by incorporating the study of older adults into the existing curriculum. Because let's face it, in every profession, we interact with an older adult every day. And we want to ensure that our students are well-prepared for their future careers, equipped to engage with and to support older adults. The options are simply limitless. So as we look to the future, I'm excited about the potential to collaborate with each of you. This is a pivotal moment for Hampton City Schools, having a unique opportunity to build momentum around the importance of cultivating positive age beliefs. Right in this moment, we have a unique opportunity to create lasting change in our schools. Simply by embracing age-inclusive curriculum and engaging with PAA and the National Center to Reframe Aging, we can foster an environment that values every generation. It's essential for our school board members and key school personnel to advocate for and to support age-positive initiatives in our school. By championing these efforts, you, as board members, can help ensure that ageism is addressed at all levels of education and that our students learn to respect and appreciate all ages. Together, we can all take action to understand the richness of aging experience and the vital roles that older adults play in our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any comments from board members? Ms. Cherry? Oh, Mr. Samuels, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chairman Mason. Thank you so much, Randy, for that presentation. I just brought back a lot of memories. And in the audience, we have one of my greatest champions, my mentor, Bill Massey. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here, Mr. Massey. Mr. Massey and I go back for many, many years. I remember Mr. Massey serving on my interview panel when I served as a worker with Peninsula Agency on Aging. And I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to learn so much about geriatric social work and the importance of us working and ensuring that we have that intergenerational experiences with our young people and the aging population. And I am excited and looking forward to the opportunity for Hampton City School to work with PAA to make sure that our young people have a better understanding of the aging process. And I'm so glad, Randy, that you brought up, you know, that photo of the first 100 years, you know, when people see individuals with cane and hearing aid. Those are adaptive equipments that enhance individuals' lives, not a deficit. And so thank you so much for the presentation. And I know that Dr. Haynes and his executive leadership team will make sure that we work closely with PAA to have, you know, you all as a part of our system of care. Thanks again.
Thank you. And I will say, Jason, to your example, Bill Massey has been serving for 40 years as the CEO of PAA, and we've celebrated 50 years. So if you want to look at what older generations and aging looks like, that's a prime example of independent 40 years of CEO, so.
All right. Anyone else? Ms. Cherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Keesey, could you introduce the other people who are here with you today?
Absolutely. So as I just mentioned, we have Bill Massey, who is our CEO. He's been there for 40 years. Tiffany Spees, who is our Chief Financial Officer. And we have Lynetta Davis, who is our HR manager.
And Ms. Martha?
You've got Ms. Martha.
Oh, and then Ms. Martha Clark. Yes. She is my... I would say Martha is probably just my fangirl. She found out I was going to be here, and she was like, "I'm coming!"
Ms. Martha's everywhere.
I know. I love her. I love her. She's a great supporter of PAA, so we love her.
We appreciate that. I think some of the buzzwords that hit me when you talked about intergenerational understanding, when you talked about connecting students so that they can appreciate and respect, when you talked about inclusive communities, and age-positive initiatives. And I think they probably connect with me so much right now is because just this past campaign, me and my three fellow board members, we actually ran into ageism on the campaign trail, and it wasn't from voters. And, you know, the fact that someone can say, "Well, everybody up here is over 50, so you might not want to vote for them", that hit hard because you hit the key word. That's a prejudice.
Absolutely.
That's a prejudice.
And it's the most accepted one that we currently have?
Exactly. And, but I must say, my school board member Stephanie Afonge, Dr. let me know, I'm not 50 yet.
Forty-nine. Oh, I always say you should celebrate every year. Absolutely.
Forty-nine and home.
But I really do think that your presentation just hits home to so many people because I remember, even in the initial meeting, you were making the point that as long as we live every day, even if you start at five years old, you're aging.
You're aging.
That's the bottom line. So I'm very excited about the possibilities, Mr. Superintendent, in terms of what we can do and become a model. I like the fact you talked about becoming a model because that's what Hampton City Schools is about, being in the forefront, taking the lead, being that shining star. So I'm looking very forward to doing that. And, Mr. Massey, I was there when you were honored at the celebration anniversary. I was very honored to be there with you. You had some very high rollers, if you will, who were singing your praises. So congratulations again, and thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, Dr. Woodhouse?
Thank you so much for informative and exciting and interesting presentation. One of the sad things that I must say, and that I think we all will agree, that age discrimination is alive and well. is alive and well. And so, it was a good presentation. I did a piece on aging and some of the illnesses that comes along with aging when I did my dissertation in healthcare administration. And so, but one of the key things that you said was when you emphasized strength and wisdom with aging, and that's a good thing, although sometime it seemed like some people get older, they don't get any wiser.
It's all their shared experiences, Dr. Woodhouse.
But we do have that piece where, in that strength and wisdom is in aging. And so, I thought that you brought out a good, you know, interesting, you know, scenario there when you presented that piece to us. So thank you so much. I'm very interested in this being, you know, part of something that we can get involved in, in the Hampton City School system. So thank you so much for your presentation today.
Thank you so much. And I tell you, it certainly aligns with our health academy, so I think, yeah, I think it's a real, you know, benefit, and I think our students will certainly gain from looking at going into this area, you know, as a potential profession. So thank you. And thank you, Ms. Cherry, because Ms. Cherry brought this to our attention and an opportunity. You know, and that's one of the things that I love about our board members, when we see opportunities for our division to move forward and do some great things in the community, you know, there's no hesitation in stepping right into it. So thank you, Ms. Cherry. All right? Dr. Haynes?
Thank you. We certainly will follow up. I know you've had some conversations with Dr. Barrow and Dr. Caziano as well, so we certainly will follow up with you.
I appreciate it. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
For our second report this evening, Ms. Trina Hatcher, our Executive Director of Student Support, will share a summary of the process used to review and draft changes to policy JP Electronic Devices. As the board is aware, on July 9, 2024, Governor Glenn Youngkin issued Executive Order Number 33. This order required all schools in Virginia to provide cellphone-free education for all students. It also required the Virginia Department of Education to develop guidance for all school divisions in the Commonwealth. On September 16, the Virginia Department of Education issued final guidance requiring all divisions to review and revise their cellphone and communication device to be in compliance by January 1, 2025. A draft of the changes proposed to the Hampton City Schools' policy will be included as part of the First Read Agenda this evening. Ms. Hatcher?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, all members of the board, congratulations on recent elections, Dr. Haynes, and our HCS family. I am here tonight to share with you some changes to our policy, cellphone and electronic devices, and I would also like to ask my teammates to come over here. I have Dr. Sarita Kason, the Director of Student Services, and Ms. Sharon Radford, who is our Restorative Practice Coordinator. As part of the team in reviewing this, lots of eyes have been on this policy. So as we likely all can agree, cellphones are a part of our daily life. They offer us an amazing tool to communicate, to learn and grow. However, in the last decade, some research has definitely been growing that shows increasing concerns over our young people's use of cellphones, especially social media, and the negative impact that that can have on learning. On the average, our young people are spending 4.8 hours of a day on social media sites, and research has said that three hours or more can really lead to poor mental health outcomes. And we know, unfortunately, that some of that does happen in our schools. So as a follow-up to that, as Dr. Haynes said, last January, this past January, Governor Glenn Youngkin did issue Executive Order 33, and he included many agencies, as you can see on the screen, I won't read them all to you, but for them to work together and develop draft guidance with the VDOE and then share that guidance with us. He is not alone. We are not alone in this work. These are some of the states listed there who either already have this policy in place for a cellphone-free education or are working on it, as Virginia is. So as required, the Virginia Department of Ed gave us their final guidance on September 16, and our timeline for this has been to just dive into that policy and start to take a look at how our policy is different or what our updates need to be. So in summary, the cellphone-free education that the guidance referenced was defined as age-appropriate elimination or restriction of cellphones and other devices. So this includes smartwatches, tablets, many of those things that can transmit and send So just the slides further will answer some of the questions that we've been asking ourselves as we've been developing this policy and a frequently asked question document to help with the implementation. So the steps that we were taking to try to make sure that we did align our policy with the guidance, but also considered the support of students, families, and our staff, we started with a small work team of administrators to look at our policy and read the guidelines and just see what else was going around in the state as well. And we had a draft policy that we've been working with. These focus groups and a frequently asked question document have been shared and discussed, and we had some focus groups at schools at all levels. We had a collection of teachers who came and helped us from each level. Administrators at our school have had their eyes on this, and offering some parent meetings where they can also have input. And then we also have our Policy Review Committee that reviews the policies before they come to the board. So the following changes are a summary of what would be required, and you can see that cellphones and electronic devices are now to remain off and stored away for the entire instructional day. That's what the governor referred to as bell-to-bell. So the beginning of the instructional day, we are defining that in Hampton as when students enter their first class, their first study block of the school day. And that instructional day then ends when the final bell rings and they are dismissed from their final class. Currently, we have had students off and away, but they were able to keep their cellphones on them. So now, with this new update, phones and devices are not going to be able to be on the student. They can be in their backpack, they can be in a bag, in a locker, or another designated storage area. Cellphones and electronic devices will be permitted, according to our draft, on school buses. We are recommending that they can be used in after-school activities for students. And secondary students, we are recommending that they can use those in work-related experiences if they are attending job shadowing, career fair, those kind of events. And so, we defined in our policy a bit for you what devices. We are considering electronic devices. The last bullet says, "Any device that's capable of connecting to Wi-Fi and can send and receive messages, images, or track locations." That's for any new devices that we may not have a name yet but may become very popular very quickly. So one of the big considerations in talking about our current policy and the updates was the communication factor, knowing that there are positive communication between parents and students. So how will parents continue to communicate with their child during a school day? We outlined family emergencies. When a parent needs to speak to that child, can still be communicated to the child by contacting the school main office. Messages can be quickly relayed to students, and then students can use phones to be able to return those calls. Most of our rooms and all classrooms do have phones. Messages can also be sent using a platform such as Parent Square, and that could go to a teacher or another staff member, and then that staff member can contact that student so that that student can receive that message quickly. Non-emergency messages, because there are still important things you might want to relay as a parent to your child during the day, can still be sent to that electronic device, and the student at the end of the day can check that to make sure that they are having that information that they need for after-school. What happens during a safety or weather event? A very serious question that takes a lot of thought. We have protocols right now that provide frequent updates through phone calls, emails, text notifications, to ensure that families have timely and reliable information. There are many safety procedures in place, although we can never be too safe. We do encourage you to be sure that all contact information is updated so that these messages about school safety and weather can be sent to you quickly. So while we have a policy, we do know that we have to consider the consequences if that policy is violated, so we do want to be consistent in this. We know that we will need to have warnings. There may be some times when students are asked to put their phone away, and they have parent notification about the continued use of that. There are also additional actions for repeat offenders. We will have school administrators reviewing these expectations following the adoption of the policy so that there will be time for students and families to understand the new implementation. These consequences will be spelled out, not in our policy, but in the frequently asked questions, and those will be available to you at the end. I will talk about how families and staff can see those. So are there any exceptions to the policy? There will be documented medical conditions that would require a student to have a cellphone for their health and safety, so that would be one exception. And then if a student with a disability or an English learner had a documented language barrier, that would be that team meeting and collaborating for the appropriate assistive technology to support that student. This policy is a student policy, so it doesn't address adult cellphone use. However, we do expect teachers and staff to be modeling an off-and-away approach to the personal devices during teaching. That creates a safe and nurturing environment as well as helps our young people learn the appropriate way to use tools. And even though most classrooms do have phones, there are reasons that a staff member will continue to keep their cellphone close to them in case of an emergency. So when will the new policy, is it planned to go into effect? VDOE advised that all Virginia schools must have this policy approved and in effect by January 1, 2025. So our plan is that pending the board approval, we would want the students to be able to start using this policy January 6, when they return from winter break. Again, communication is key, and these are just some highlights of some of the ways that we plan to communicate with our families and staff. There is a new webpage that is up and live, and I'll show you on the next slide. It does include the frequently asked questions that I referenced and other resources. Part of the governor's initiative talked about cellphone addiction, and so there are resources there for parents if they are concerned about their child's cellphone use and how to better support that. That will be, that's today, so that is all out there right now. Our Parent Square notification will go as a phone call and an email to all our families tomorrow. We will also advise our staff of that. Off-and-away flyer to distribute with Peachjar will also be on social media, and that will be coming out the following week. And then we do have some other things to add to our social media and our website, such as a little video to get people's attention and hopefully let them learn a little bit more about this initiative. And right before students do return from winter break, we will have a reminder for them. And then individuals will be able to ask questions that are not addressed here on our website. So if you're able to see, which I know it's kind of small, but you can actually check out the site live, families are able to, and members of the community, are able to see the frequently asked questions, and then there is a form that they can click. And if they have any further questions, then we will answer those and include those in the frequently asked questions to build that understanding and knowledge about the changes to the policy. And that concludes the information. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments from board members? Dr. Banks Gray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So thank you, Ms. Hatcher. I know there's a lot of anxiety with students, parents, guardians, as it relates to rolling this out as of January 6, but I think you guys did a wonderful job of giving us that blueprint of what this is going to look like. This is something that, like, we're not arbitrarily putting this into place. It's coming, it's being mandated, so I think we've done a great job of kind of easing some of that anxiousness we may see from our actual HCS community. So job well done, and thank you for this presentation.
Thank you.
Ms. F. Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Hatcher, for that presentation. Definitely informative. I think, like Dr. Banks Gray said, it answers a lot of questions for parents and for our community because certainly lots of questions are being asked about how this is to be implemented. I really like the idea that we included students and parents in our focus group so that we, they get that feedback upfront on how the policies should be adjusted. Also, that we have exceptions that are outlined, especially for medical situations, and for those students who use devices, who have disabilities, that their IAP or 504 plans can reflect the need for that. And those meetings also will be done in conjunction with parents and teachers and an administrator who can certainly identify what that need is and how it should be reflected in their individualized plans. And so, I really liked that that was there. Lastly, the communication efforts that are in place for all of our parents and for the community, I think, are very robust, and that, you know, as long as we really push those out, as indicated here, which I know that we will, that parents and the community will be effectively informed about what this is going to look like and also have the opportunity for feedback and questions. And so, I think that that's really excellent as well. So thank you for the presentation, and thank you all in the committees for all your efforts in putting this together.
Ms. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Hatcher. I agree with everything my other two board members have said in terms of the process and planning for this. Very appreciative. I did have just a couple of questions, just for clarification. When you talk about emergency notification, parents will call the school. So I'm assuming that we're going to make sure that phones are staffed at all times for that, right?
Yes.
We're going to have to do a little push there.
Yes, that'll be part of the work for administrators and staff to prepare once this...
Yeah, because, okay.
Yes.
And in non-emergency notifications, how did you say that's going to be communicated?
So they can call the main office and tell the child, you know, ask, "Can you get a message to my child? Maybe they need to be picked up early. Someone else is going to be at the bus stop." Those kind of things that aren't necessarily a huge family emergency, but they need to know that information. There's also Parent Square where teachers and parents can communicate, so it's possible, especially at the elementary level, that a parent could message that teacher.
Got it. So they call the office for emergency and non-emergency?
Yes.
Okay. So the other question becomes, I know a lot of times, and I've read something about this in looking at this policy statewide, a lot of times our coaches have to get in touch with their players at the last minute, and I know they do it through the cellphone. So has that been discussed on how this is going to be?
It's actually mentioned in the guidance, and it asks that coaches and other extracurricular sponsors use something, not a social media app, during the school day. However, it doesn't specify texting after school time, so that's another school-based process that we will have to work out and make clear.
Yeah, yeah. I thought that might be because if there's a game change or there's no practice or whatever, for coaches to get that to there.
And the guidance really gives, and this is where, you know, we have to follow the guidance, but we also have some flexibility on some issues.
That's great.
So that's one example of that. During the school day, no, we wouldn't, but before and after school.
Right. And my last question, which really isn't, it's really a suggestion. You talked about the ways that we would make sure that the policy was followed, and if it were not followed, some of the offshoots. And one of them was phone confiscation. And the second one, right after that, said parent notification. Maybe what we can do is tie those two together. Phone confiscation, because I know you're not talking about keeping the baby's phone, right? You're just taking it away from them. So maybe what we can do is tie phone confiscation with parent notification. Because I can tell you, Bobby's going to give a different reason why you took his phone. So I'm thinking if, when we confiscate the phone, we can let the parent know that the phone has been confiscated and why as well.
Correct. That will be in the frequently asked questions, those consequences. Well, I have the clicker here, so why am I doing that? That is mentioned that the parent would be notified on the second offense so that they would know that their child, before the phone is even taken from the child, the parent would know that it's been a concern in the classroom.
Oh, okay. Okay, I see. Oh, okay. Okay, I see. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
Okay. So, second offense.
And again, those will be in the frequently asked questions so that parents can ask more questions about those, or anyone who doesn't understand how that can be implemented.
Okay. That's great. I think the frequently asked question's going to help a lot. You know, we found that works well.
Our budget process. So I think that's good.
Yes, agreed.
Mr. Samuels?
Thank you so much, Chairman Mason. And Ms. Hatcher, thank you so much for this information. And I know our main business is teaching and learning. And I've made it very clear from my conversation with you that teaching and learning is our main business. And so one of the, if you could go back into the slide as it relates to how are we going to get the information disseminated to the, to parents, I want to make sure that, you know, when we're looking at it from the executive level, we're also looking at the ground level, especially at the different grade level, elementary, middle, and high school, that we have our administration team and their staff that are communicating directly with these parent, with parents. Because unfortunately and regrettably, many parents do not respond to parent square and all their things. So we have to utilize every avenue and every means to make sure that we communicate this to our parents, especially those face-to-face conversations is very important. The other thing as we look at this executive order and some of the information and language that is being used, you know, I'm hoping that we have, also have other opportunities because this will not be implemented until January the 1st as it relates to, one of the concern that I have is the policy, if you look at paragraph one, the last sentence, the policy also applies to uninstructed time, including lunch, recess, class transition, and restroom breaks. So if a child has their bookbag, their cellphone is in their bookbag, and they go to the restroom, utilize the rest, utilize their phone while in the restroom, how are we going to monitor that? You know, so there are some gaps in that. So I just want to just highlight that. The other one that I also want to highlight is the last page, paragraph, the first paragraph, which is the last sentence, if a school staff, school staff suspect the device has been used in violation of the law, the device may be handed over to law enforcement. Technically, the device, since the device is the property of a person, shouldn't that require subpoena for law enforcement to remove the cellphone from that particular student? And shouldn't the parents be notified that this device is being confiscated by a law enforcement? Because I can guarantee you, as a parent, a law enforcement officer, and no disrespect, HIPAA, no disrespect, a law enforcement is not going to have access to my son's cellphone.
I can certainly.
Okay. The last, the last paragraph as it relates to Hampton City School assumes no responsibility for the loss, destruction, damage, theft, or any financial charges related to the use of cellphones or other electronic devices once it's in their property. How are we going to ensure that a cellphone is not damaged during a confiscational process and during storage? Because a child can say that phone is, was damaged when a Hampton City School staff and/or personnel attempt to remove this phone from this child. Or if the phone is placed in a location once it's confiscated, the parent and child can say that this phone is damaged. Who is technically, technically then responsible for this phone? So I, I would just want us to have, I want us to vet this. I want us to look at this from every angle. I'm looking at this as a parent of a child who is in the ninth grade. I'm also looking at it from a board member with liability. And the fact that we have police officers, security officer, who can confiscate a phone and then have the opportunity to go through that phone and look at footage that could relate to felony charges, misdemeanor charges. We don't first get in a subpoena to do so. These are my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Dr. Woodhouse?
Ms. Hatcher, I appreciate your presentation on tonight. I think we all are aware that cellphones have been a distraction in instructional time. And I heard you say something concerning cellphone addiction. I'm wondering, when we talk about cellphone addiction, have the research tackled the cellphone addiction effects on, of withdrawal and the backlash from the expectations and consequences that we will apply to this, to this policy?
I'm not sure I can answer that, but I can definitely check that research and let you know. The policy, the addiction part of it is really the motivation behind the executive order. So there are lots of resources, and I can certainly get back to you on how that, if your child is addicted and the phone is gone, what are the outcome?
Right. Thank you.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Excellent. Ms. Chair?
Brief if I could. No, that's kind of where I was going with the confiscation part. That, and I don't have a kid in Hampton City Schools, but I'm trying to think of it from a parent's perspective. And knowing that my child may not always give me the actual information or factual information, but if I don't know that, that can cause problems for Hampton City Schools.
That's true.
So I think we just probably need to have a little bit, and I'm sure you will, more discussion about the unintended consequences.
Well, I have several more frequently asked questions that we can follow up on for sure and add to our document. Yes, yes.
And Ms. Hatcher, I'm just thinking globally. And those?
Absolutely.
I am thinking globally. And it's not that I'm trying to get at you or get at this policy. I just want to make sure that once this is launched and this is in place, we are going to get so many different questions from parents and stakeholders and so forth. And I want to make sure that we, we, we look at this from every angle possible. So when, if we are approached as board members, if we are approached in the community, we have good, sorry, we have some sort of, an answer to questions.
Yeah, agreed. And some of the actual policy, we don't have as much Hampton choice, but on some of the implementation, we do. So we want to make sure that when we do have a choice, we can consider all of that. But there are many parts of the policy that we won't have a choice on. And so that becomes why we're, our questions are out there, so that our families can ask us those questions, so we can help get on the same page with how we're going to do this and how we will support it together. So, so I appreciate the questions, because that will help us as we're moving forward to implement. And of course, you all have the, I'm going to have the policy in the formal version a little bit later in the meeting, so.
One of the things that I want to, as we formulate this information and put it out, and you were alluding to that, in terms of what is actually a part of the executive order that we have to follow, and then where's that flexibility that we have, I think that's going to help alleviate some of the questions for parents. And I would hope that would alleviate some of the emails and phone calls that we will actually get. This is a really, really double-edged sword situation. I think that the, the schools have been put in, in terms of this policy, because this generation basically were born with cellphones in their hands. I think text messages were probably sent by the babies when they came out the womb. I'm here, you know? And so trying to put them in a place that now you're going to restrict their access, you know? Once you've let this horse out of the gate, it's hard to put this horse back in the gate to start over. And that's where I think we're going to be challenged. So I think we should expect that this policy implementation is not going to be as smooth as we think. I think the hope is there, but I think we should also be prepared to continue to work on this policy. Because we want to make sure that the technology is used for safety, of course, you know, and used properly. But then also we are providing our students with opportunities to learn without hindrances of the, of the use of cellphones and some of the other technologies. Because you think about all of the things you've identified, from watches to cellphones to other things. I mean, you have pens and stuff that can, that sends messages. And so when you start talking about anything that connects to Wi-Fi is a problem. I think we're really going to, it's so much, so many thoughts right now in terms of how we're going to process this. And that's why I think this is going to continue to be a work in progress. But I do want to hear from our student rep on this, because Caleb, you are a student. This, this policy is going to affect you. What are your thoughts? Give us some feedback, you know, because you're one of those kids that had a cellphone out the womb, you know? So, you probably have your cellphone on you now, don't you? Exactly. Give us some feedback. What do you think?
From, excuse me, from my conversations with students around the building on this matter, students are not happy, as to be expected. And some of the things that I've heard were, the transition is going to be the most difficult part. If students were able to experience the transition coming into the year, it may have been a smoother transition. The feelings will still be hurt, granted, but it would have been a smoother transition in terms of that. One thing as well is about that confiscation piece. A lot of students will not willingly give up their phones. And that leads to, if we look, if you want, if you want to look into the data, you know, a lot of that comes from, you know, cultural norms and things such as that. So when it comes to those offenses and those consequences, thank you, we have to kind of, you know, be cognizant of that in terms of what students, what types of students are being targeted.
Targeted. Let's just be honest.
Thank you very much. So I think we're really going to have to look at how this is put in place. And we're going to need the support of the community. We're going to need parents to step in and support this process. If this is a situation where we are being mandated by the governor through this executive order, we're going to need the parents to understand this and how, like I said, how we can effectively implement a policy that satisfies this mandate, but then also maintains the support of our students and our parents, you know, and this community. So we're really going to have to work through this. Yeah. But excellent job in terms of what the work that's been done, and I can see it's been very thoughtful. It's one of those things that, you know, you look at some equations sometimes in math classes, you think, how did I get here? You know? But eventually, we work and we find the solution. And I think that the division leadership team, you know, we've, we've had some other difficult challenges before us, and we've been able to manage those things. And so I know that we will be able to come out on top with something, you know? And so thank you for everything. And I know, Dr. Haynes, you had a comment?
No, no, I'm fine.
Dr. Haynes?
Thank you, Chair Mason. Just wanted to add, certainly want to thank the committee because there's a lot of foresight and forethought in regards to what was presented to you all this evening. This was not just done haphazardly. And making certain, we clearly delineated what was we, part of the executive order from the governor versus our procedures. And I would argue that, and Dr. C, you can chime in as well, Ms. Hatcher, what we have in place, even in terms of the offenses and consequences, are much more lenient than some of the, some of the surrounding districts that have already implemented this. So we have taken quite a few things into consideration prior to presenting it to the board and to the community, and taking into consideration that these offenses, we know coming out of the gate is going to be a challenge. So we did not make them as stringent or as, as tough as what other school divisions may have in place. And Ms. Hatcher, you can chime in on that as well.
Absolutely. And so when you use the word confiscation, that sounds very negative, but the consequences are really for the student to put this phone back where it is not interrupting education. It's not for us to take the phone. It's, these consequences give the student many opportunities to say, I'm in class, I'm learning, I'm going to put my phone back in my backpack, which could actually be right there in my classroom, or back in my purse, or back in my bag, or maybe in some environments, back in a location that the teacher has designated that is safe. And we are looking at some of those, you know, something that would lock the phones up. So we are considering some of that equipment and things that could help us with this. But again, this isn't to say that children are just going to be handing their phones over to people. That's not the intention of these consequences. It's to respect the learning environment and to be more engaged and build those healthy relationships and have that phone off and put away. And really, for a lot of our young people, the only difference is, is that we have allowed them to have it in their pocket or, you know, right on them. And now it would not be able to be on their person. That, that's, you know, and I'm acknowledging, that's a big transition. It's more of a geometry problem than a simple math problem.
And we have taken a softer approach when looking at the offenses. And to Caleb's point and my conversations with superintendents in Region 2, some of them did start at beginning of the year. They actually wished they hadn't, and they wished they had waited until they could ease this process in, into the second semester. So you can look at it from various ways, and there are still ways we need to make certain that we get it out to community and get the support from our parents at home as well.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's a work in progress.
It is.
All right.
Final, for our final report, Mr. Chair, Ms. Brittany Branch, our chief financial officer, will provide a business and finance report for September 2024.
Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, school board members, Dr. Haynes, and the Hampton community. Tonight, I am presenting the monthly report for September 2024. During the month of September, we received $15.7 million in revenue. That brought our year-to-date revenues to $62 million for the year. The largest revenue source continued to be state funds. And at the end of September, we had about 19% of our budgeted revenues received. For September, our spending and our encumbrances totaled $23.9 million for that month alone. And that was a cumulative amount by the end of September of $87 million of expenditures and encumbrances. The largest spending categories were instruction, operations, and maintenance, and that was primarily salaries and benefits. And by the end of September, we had over 27% of the budget utilized. We will be presenting next month information about the fall membership report. That was actually submitted after this board report was sent to the school board. But you do have, as always, the transfers to and from the technology classification for the month as well for your review. And that concludes tonight's presentation.
Any questions? Ms. Branch said, "Thank you."
Mr. Chair, that concludes superintendent and staff reports.
Thank you, Dr. Haynes. All right, next, we'll move to item number five on the agenda, items for action. We have 5.01, review of school board policy GCPAR, reduction in workforce guidelines. 5.02, revision of school board policy GCPF, suspension of employees. 5.03, review of school board policy GCQC, exchange teaching. 5.04, review of school board policy KL, public complaints. 5.05, review of school board policy AF, comprehensive plan. 5.06, new school board policy AG, literacy plan. And 5.07, new school board policy IGBD, programs for students with reading deficiencies. And what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of action items 5.01 through 5.07 as a block.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by Dr. Banks Gray and seconded by Mr. Samuels, that we approve items for action 5.01 through 5.07 as a block. Is there any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call the, call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Next item is number six, deliberation-first read. We have 6.01, which is revision of school We have 6.01, which is Revision of School Board Policy JP, All Electronic Devices, which we've just had a very robust discussion on that. And so I think it's fair to say we can move along to 6.02.
Can I make, can I make one?
Oh, you, yes.
So we just said all the eyes that are on this and all of our thoughtfulness. However, somehow we made some changes yesterday after speaking with administrators. So the copy I put in your folder, actually, that first paragraph is discrepant from what we said further in the policy. So if you read the first paragraph with me, it says to minimize disruptions and we're going along. And then after the instructional day, the rest of that paragraph should not be there because we define instructional day as when class starts, when that student goes to that class. So just just to let you know that that hard copy, it will be right on the board docs, but that hard copy you have in your folder is wrong.
So the blue portion is not going to be?
The instructional day is not going to be immediately when the student walks into the building. It is when they go into that first class.
Okay, so from the instructional day all the way to restroom breaks?
Correct.
That's not there, okay.
You will see that exact wording later in the policy. On page two, after all the red strike through, you will see it says, "Cell phones and electronic devices must remain often stored." The instructional day begins when students enter the first class study block of the school day and ends when students exit their final class.
Okay.
Okay, that's what she's going to say.
All right, so this one, the last sentence is.
Any other questions, any new questions?
I I have this question. So what if a school board decides we're not going to follow this? What's the consequence?
Our board attorney. Attorney to advise. I am not aware that any division has. Well, I'll tell you that I did look today through, and I have not seen any school division that is not complying with this.
Well, you know, we're in a.
Has has the governor laid out what the consequences should and will be for his executive order? Should a school division not move forward with it?
VDOE guidelines talk a bit about that po, having that policy available and to VDOE. The governor did not put that in the order, but VDOE guidelines do talk a little bit about that.
So are you, will you be able to share?
The guidelines?
Yes.
Yes, I can even give you a hard copy tonight if you like. But yes, I can send you that link for sure. It's on the VDOE site and it it has a lot of information in it.
Okay.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. It's linked on the website, Mr. Samuels.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think what Dr. Mason said earlier makes a lot of sense in terms of if we can, through communication, make sure people understand what we can't change, you know, what what's hard and fast. This is what's going to happen. And also then push that piece out that speaks to, however, here's some flexibility. And because of that, we're not as strict as some divisions and we're going to do some other things, you know. But I think if I see in black and white where you can't change that, because I think what everybody's feeling is, if I could do an analogy, if the governor said, on Thanksgiving Day, you will have a ham on that table. Let's say that's it, okay? But what everybody's feeling is, you're not going to tell me how to cook it, okay? I might bake it, she might fry, but it'd be a ham, okay? So I think that's where a lot of the confusion is coming from. How do we make it happen, you know? So if we know what's hard and fast that we cannot change, we can't tweak, you know, we can't read between the lines, then I think that'll be very helpful to everybody, especially our parents. Well, you know what, more importantly, to our students, you know, because our students, they're the ones who really have to have the buy-in because if they don't have the buy-in, we're going to have issues. So I think that would be helpful too. Okay, thanks.
Absolutely, yes.
Mm-hmm, all right. So that brings us to item 6.02, 2024-2025 Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook Update.
And I am going to allow Dr. Kason since she manages the handbook. But we wanted the handbook and the policy to come in tandem to the board because the handbook is our tool to communicate with families. So that's why you're seeing that as well.
Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Gray, School Board members, congratulations. Hampton DLT, Hampton City Schools DLT and and community members. We've talked a lot of night, tonight about cellphone policy. So what have given you already is a track and sheet for the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. We do want it to align with what Ms. Hatcher has already presented to you all. So I'm not going to go over it in a lot of detail because we've heard most of it already tonight. But some of the changes we did on page 32 is removing the words bring your own device, which we had from our previous policy. We did some wording adding and we removed some wordings on pages 34 through 35 under the heading of Electronic Devices, HCS Policy JP. And again, a lot of that wording was already mentioned by Ms. Hatcher. The consequence for violating a policy JP is added on page 36. Exemption to the policy, which was included in Ms. Hatcher's presentation, that will be found on page 36 as well. And cellphone policy on page 37 was removed, again, just to match what was already presented, to make sure everything aligns. Thank you.
All right, so now that takes us to item number seven, Hearing of Any Delegations or Presentations of Any Written Communications or Petitions. All right, and we do have just three? Is that all, any more come in? Just these three? Okay, Ms. Charbonneau, will you please read the protocol?
Protocol for public comment period. Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk by 6:45 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All comments should be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum or on policy issues. Comments shall relate to agenda items or matters germane to the business or duties of the school board. Speakers' comments on individuals at their own, on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentations of resolution, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters as subsequent, at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
All right, thank you very much. Our first speaker tonight is Christina Rowley. Is that correct? Rowley, okay, great, thank you. And we ask that you please state your name and your address.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I, I'm Christina Rowley. I live at 303 Little Round Top, Hampton, Virginia. I am actually here today to speak in regards to the October 9 event that happened for all 11th graders. Hampton City Schools and Hampton Park and Recreation all got together and they they did an event that was under the emphasis of College and Career Readiness Day at the Hampton Roads Convention Center. Per Dr. John Cagiano, Deputy Superintendent and Chief Staff, the permission slip is the same one that's been used over the past several years and has not been updated to reflect the changes in venue. My biggest concern is that it did say college readiness on it. The event was not college readiness related at all. It was an event that went over Safe Places by Hampton City Parks and Rec, the Police Department. A few of the Hampton City School counselors spoke and such about safe places within the city of Hampton. It went into the LGBT Life Center that provided additional perspectives on support networks available within the community. According to what was put out for Parent Square, it was stated that the speaker went beyond the instructed scope of the discussion to ensure the students received appropriate and relevant content that they had cut off and cut short the guest speaker's time because they did not endorse the additional material that was supported. However, Hampton Parks and Rec specifically had put in their statement that they had sent me was that the representatives from the Hampton Police Division and Hampton Parks and Recreation Department also spoke, providing insight into community safety and support services. Guest speaker from the LGBT Life Center further enriched the session, offering students additional perspectives on support networks within the community involving health and wellness, sorry, health and wellness, supporting families and community and providing transformative education advocacy. The information was provided to over 1,300 Hampton City Schools students and staff. My concern, like I said, is that the the actual permission slip was for College and Career Readiness Day. It had nothing to do with Safe Spaces. It had nothing to do with LGBT, what was going on in that particular discussion. Hampton City Schools letter that they put out was put out because I encouraged them to do so per my conversation with them. I was upset because I agreed to a college career readiness event for my child not to go and learn about Safe Spaces, which I'm perfectly fine with, but it was the other information that was brought forward. My child is very sincere in how she feels about things and she was extremely uncomfortable for the presentation that was put on. And it wasn't just about contraceptives, it was how to use the contraceptives. And I got very explicit for these children. And it wasn't just my child that expressed this. I've spoken to multiple parents, spoken to guidance counselors, teachers and other staff.
Thank you. Next is Dylan Richardson. As you approach the podium, please give your name and address.
My name is Dylan Richardson. I live in 234 Cherry Avenue, Hampton, Virginia. Good evening, members of the school board. I'm deeply committed to advocating for special education and family support within our community. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight about an important initiative that can reach, enrich our students' educational experience and foster a more inclusive environment. I'm here to ask for your support in officially recognizing Religious Freedom Day in our schools on January 16, 2025. Religious freedom is a cornerstone of our democracy, ensuring that everyone has the right to practice their faith without fear of persecution. This fundamental right is so significant that it is recognized at the highest levels of our government. Both the president and the governor have proclaimed the importance of Religious Freedom Day. By educating students about religious freedom, we can also help them comprehend the significance of the moment silence in a pledge of allegiance. In conclusion, by officially acknowledging Religious Freedom Day in our schools on January 16, 2025. We are, we are not just recognizing a date on the calendar. We are affirming our commitment to fostering a culture of respect, understanding and inclusivity among our students. This recognition serves as a powerful symbol of our dedication to upholding the fundamental rights and values that makes our educational community strong and diverse. Together, let's embrace this opportunity to educate, inspire and create a more harmonious and supportive environment for all. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last presenter is Dr. Ken Elazer. If you could state your name and address as you approach the podium, thank you.
Good evening. Dr. Ken Elazer. And I want to say it's appropriate that everyone gives you the congratulations for the current election results. And I think the city of Hampton is the true winner. I don't, I didn't see any, nothing but winners out these past few weeks. I saw many of you out. It was, it was very encouraging to see that it was not a competition. Although the open seats, you know, we, you really were in in competition in a sense for the openings, along with others who may have been running, again, across the city in the local election, not just particularly for the board. And it was very encouraging to see the cooperation and the collaboration among you all and how you supported each other along with your supporters and the volunteers and the family members and everyone else that was out there. With some of you I saw in the in the parking lots and late at night putting up signs and supporting each other, multiple candidates. So I I want to continue, I hope, I want to urge you to continue that collaboration and cooperation. For example, when you just mentioned the issues with the cell phones, may I suggest that you continue to go out into the community? I'll be with you, just like we were in the parking lots handing out things. And so that we can talk to the parents, talk to the students, bring everybody together in in a series of forums so that we can get those things addressed and maybe we can head off some of that opposition and resistance and pushback that we might get trying to put this new order in place. You know, I I liken that to the fact that we had multiple candidates and their supporters out in the parking lots handing out the literature. And after the people voted, we collected the literature, we sorted it and we gave it back to those respective candidates, all in cooperation and love for each other. So there's no reason why it should be any different when we implement these policies that may or may not have been, you know, initiated through us, but they were mandates coming down. So as a, as a, the reason I put doctor up there just so that you would recognize I'm part of the educational community too, just like we did with geriatrics. I'm not quite there yet. But we can also help in that area too, you know, because it's a community, right? And and so every issue that you put up here, good, bad and indifferent, involves the whole community. So that's, that's really what I'm saying. Come on back out, you know, come back out to the precincts now. Don't, you know, don't wait till the next cycle. We're here, we want to help. You can tell, you can, you know that, we were out there and we were pushing for you. Rain, shine, heat, snow, we had our chairs, we had everything and we were really, we really want good leadership for the city. That's it, so we won, thank you. All right, so expect to see you all out here again. Call us, we're we're here. Don't just put us away for the next cycle, okay?
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Mm-hmm. All right, so that brings up to us to item number eight. Information, 8.01, next meeting. Community Parties Workshop will actually be held on November 14.
Oh, that's wrong.
At Kickitane.
At Kickitane.
It's going to be at Kickitane High School. It's actually listed as Jones on the, on the meeting agenda, but it's actually going to be at Kickitane High School. Okay, on November the, no. On November the 14th. And starting, was it 6:30? Is it, is it 6:30, I think? Six, is it six or 6:30? It's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. and that's going to be at Kickitane. Okay, it's listed incorrectly on the, on the, as far as under the agenda for tonight. But it's at Kickitane on the 14th of November from 6:00 to 8:00. And then our next regular meeting will be held right here on December the 4th at Jones Magnet at 6:30. All right, other items for information from board members, 8.02. Mr. Samuels?
I just want to share that high school basketball tryout will be November the 14th and 15th. The 14th for JV and the 15th for varsity. Just want to put that out there.
Dr. Haynes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. November 1st, 2024 marks the end of the first marking period for the 24-25 school year. Tuesday, November 12th, well, we will host our first Citizen of the Month Luncheon for the school year. We hope board members will be able to join us that day to celebrate our students. Uh, Tuesday, November 12. Thursday, like Dr. Mason already mentioned, November 14th, we will hold our annual Community Parties Workshop. This year will be at Kickitane, Kickitane High School from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. We have invited community partners who will contribute valuable insights to Master Plan 2.0. During the workshop, participants will engage in breakout sessions using success indicators from elementary and middle school experiences to help shape the qualities of a portrait of a Hampton graduate. Wednesday, November 27th through Friday, November 29th, all schools and administrative offices will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday. That concludes information from the superintendent, Mr. Chair.
Any comments from other board members?
I have a question, Mrs. Chair.
Okay, Ms. Chair.
We're, are we having two meetings in December?
No, just one.
The reason I'm asking is because I'm looking at this cellphone policy. And if it was on deliberation first read, then the next meeting, it would be, it wouldn't go straight to action. So when? So when is it going to go to action to be for January 1?
Looking at the calendar. We could actually have a second read at the Parties Workshop.
Okay, okay, that works. I know you just made that up, but that works. Okay.
We do discuss a little business, and we have before, at the Parties Workshop. And actually, that might not be a bad opportunity to get a little more feedback during the Community Parties Workshop as well.
Yeah, that's true.
And we could put literatures out at that particular time.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks.
All right. I do want to commend the division for an outstanding celebration of excellence. That was amazing. I've received so much feedback from that event and people that actually were able to come out. Some people, they've seen the video clips that have been prepared by our communications and all team, and so thank you so much for putting that information out. And several people have commented that that's something that we need to do a little more often, just in terms of sharing with the community what the successes look like in Hampton City Schools. Oftentimes, we only hear about the challenges and the problems that occur, but we need to make sure that people know what we're doing. One of the pitfalls in terms of education right now is that people are hearing all of the negative pieces to education and not really understanding the true rewards that exist in the field of education. And so being able to hear all of the exciting things that are happening with education will certainly help bring more people into this field that have a lot of great things to offer to what we're doing in our communities to educate our students. And so I wanted to share that with the division leadership team because, like I said, I did receive several messages and several phone calls in regards to the celebration of excellence. And so thank you all for all of the hard work, you know? I always talk about the work that you all put into working with our kids day in and day out and all of the hard work of our teachers and our educators. And we certainly need to put more of that information out to the community, just like we did tonight, to celebrate our teachers and our students in terms of all of the great things that they're doing. I also want to thank the Hampton Education Foundation because they actually put on a wonderful Heff Fest this weekend to, you know, raise some money for the things that they're doing in terms of scholarships and activities and all to support Hampton City Schools and our students. And I've already congratulated our incumbents, but the last thing I do want to do is acknowledge Trent Garrett and Jacob Young, who are next-generation storytellers. I can't say enough about that project and that program. The movies that those students produced and the hard work that was put into that, it was simply amazing. Folks from Newport News, this was their first year participating with us, and they talked about the work that was done, and they were excited to be a part of this project this year, and they were thankful, you know, for the vision of Hampton City Schools to actually put something like this in place, giving our students an opportunity to really expose them to producing and acting and really the whole process of putting together a movie. And the expectations that we're certainly going to see some of these kids from Hampton City Schools on the big screen and also on the stage receiving Oscars and Emmys and Tonys and a number of different things in the years to come. So I definitely want to thank all those involved, but especially Trent and Jacob because they've taken a lot of time to come into our community and give back and pour into our students, all right? Anything from our student rep?
You know, today I've heard a lot about, you know, unity. Unity is a word that stuck out to me today, unifying our community, you know, those in our community here in the city of Hampton, but also neighboring communities. Saying that, as you all may know, I am the drum major at Phoebus High School with the Phenomenal Marching Phantoms. And we actually have a battle, a Battle of the Peninsula with Denby High School on, the Denby High School Soul Regiment, on Saturday, November 9th. Going to be at Denby High School. Tickets will be $10 and it'll be starting at 6:00 p.m.
All right, okay.
So it's just Phoebus and...
So it'll be Phoebus versus Denby.
All right. Give them that date and time again, pumpkin.
It will be Saturday, November 9th at 6:00 p.m.
Mm-hmm. At Denby High School.
At Denby High School.
Okay, got it.
Mm-hmm.
That's your birthday.
Thank you.
That's on Dr. Mason's birthday.
All right. With no further business to be brought before this board, I declare this meeting adjourned.